Let's do it. I'd call the meeting to order, please. Welcome, everybody. We'll start, as usual, with public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You come to the podium. Speak into the microphone, please. And you have three minutes to express yourself, give or take. Do we have anybody for a public comment? Okay. We will move on, then, to the budget, public hearing. For those of you that were here last week, you know, we went through it one time. We had some questions that were raised and so on. We'll go through it again tonight. I want to start the conversation. When we ended last week, I believe it was Selectman Bugbee asked everybody on the board to go through the budget one more time during the past week and see if we saw any more opportunities that we would bring up at this meeting. I did that. I'm sure John did it. And, to be honest, the only opportunity I see in response to that request is relative to the Lee Fair. And $8,000, that's appropriated for the Lee Fair. I suggest that we reduce that to $4,000. And it's my understanding also, the Fair Committee reviewed the same allocation and, as I understood it today, came up with the same suggestion. If that's an error, Karen, if you'd like to come up.
No, the Fair Committee met last Wednesday, and we also concluded to reduce the -- we're going to reduce it to $4,000 in the efforts to help with the budget cuts. Majority of us were present at the last Selectment's meeting and saw all the other budget cuts, especially some of them due to safety. And we felt that if we were cutting safety, we should definitely cut the Fair budget to $4,000 for fireworks.
Okay. Thank you. Selectman Bugbee, I'll go to you and see if you came up with any more comments.
It's John's turn, I would think.
Why would you think that?
Because you're not going to like what I have to say, so let's have John, because his --
Well, I don't like what you have to say, even if John goes first. So go ahead.
All right. I'll provide the anchor. Okay. All right. All right. I'm on page four. Police budget, gas and vehicles. I would like to reduce that by $3,000, just based on -- I know what he's going to say, but just based on what they've spent so far, the price of fuel going forward, I think we can probably make a reduction there. And the other thing I would say to the chief is, if he gets into this budget and he needs more money, come to us and maybe use some money out of contingency.
We ran into this once before. Selectman Seaton cut our gas line item, and shortly after it being cut, prices went to the roof. So that's one area that I don't like to work around, but if you assure me that we go over on that and there's money there to cover it.
That's what I'm just suggesting. One of the things that -- and I'll just -- I can't make a blanket statement, and I'm not saying that every department does it, but there's always contingency money built in what ifs. And some of those are needed, some of those aren't, but at some point, we've got to say that we can't afford all these contingencies, because we keep giving back, you know, 200,000, 300,000. And I think we need to tighten up that a little bit. But I would suggest, if this goes forward, that we tell the chief, if he needs more money in gas, because gas went up, come to us and let us use some of the contingencies to cover those particular expenses.
How much is their proposal, the contingency?
Twenty thousand.
The contingency right now is 20,000. The state views that that's supposed to be for unanticipated expenses, i.e. emergencies.
Well, we're not anticipating the gas to go up that significantly, so it is.
Well, I'm not sure we anticipated it five years ago either, but why not? I have another suggestion. I think it's almost an error for Selectman to go down a line item budget and say, well, let's take it from here and take it from there. What if we ask the depart -- I mean, the department heads know where they have room to move and don't have room to move. What if we just ask for 5%, whatever, 3% number that we can agree on and ask them to go back? Maybe we don't have the time to do that. We don't have the time to do that. Okay. Well, never mind. John?
I'm not enthusiastic about that cut. I'm sorry. I wouldn't support it.
That's all. I wouldn't either. All right.
You're off to look for now.
On-call firefighter -- excuse me, wrong one. Night shift incentive. He's asking for 23,000. I'd like to reduce that by 1,000, just based on what's been spent in previous years and what's been spent so far this year. I think they could take that reduction.
My response to that is, given what we've seen in the past week, past week and a half relative to higher activity, first responder activity, I'm really loathe to cut any of their resources.
Well, this is the night shift incentive.
Well, I --
So that's a fixed cost. He has certain particular shifts that he covers that they give an incentive for that.
Okay.
You are correct. We do have a certain amount of shifts per year, and those are the ones that we give the money back, just because we haven't had them covered. It takes a lot of time and effort with these, with our members. We have quite a few members that sign up for six of these a week, so they put a lot of effort into that. We're starting to get more people certified, and so we're going to have more people available to take those shifts. But you're right, that's what we do. We just look at Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday, Thursday, and we just add it up.
Okay. John, comment?
I'd like to leave him alone.
Okay.
Highway Department. Next, the last item, salt, sand and magnesium. I'd like to drop that by 4,000. See if he would like what I have to say.
I guess not. I got like, I'm the flipster. What line is that one?
Seven.
I don't like that cut, for obvious reasons. You keep adding more roads to this town, and you keep getting more and more things that need to put material on. Salt goes up and down this year. It's low. Some years, it's $70 a ton. It's 47 this year. So, you know, and we've been going through it because of the storms we have. So if we run out...
Well, in previous years, it's been 22, 23. Don't remember what it is. Something I have that we can check.
You're right, it's been 22 or 23.
Yep.
I'm not as tight with it as Randy was, though.
Oh, okay. And so far, you've spent nothing, because we haven't had any need of it yet.
Actually, I've spent a fair amount. I'm up around 10 or 12.
This is as of the end of November. I don't have December.
Well, as of right now, it's up around 10 or 12.
Okay.
And you get your -- if the public safety thing goes through, that's more asphalt. I have to put material on. And you had Daniel's Drive that's being added, and I know there's a -- I think there's a few more in the pipeline. You just keep adding lane miles. It's just...
Okay. John, comment?
We really haven't --
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm sorry.
Could I just, maybe as we go through each of these, find out from the boards whether two or four, or two or against, just so we know?
Four?
No, four or --
Like, they're four?
Four cutting or against cutting.
I don't think they --
I haven't cut anything yet.
Either one of them.
Okay. So, thank you.
All right. The next one for me is general assistance. We keep carrying 20,000. The thing is, no matter what we budget, we have to spend it, so why would we keep carrying 20,000 when we spend, you know, 10, 12,000?
Which line are you looking at?
General assistance, rental assistance.
As you said, we have to spend it, we have to spend it.
No, I know that. I know that.
So what would you recommend cutting it to?
I would like to drop it to 15.
We have to agree with Mr. Witten. I'm sorry. I agree with Mr. Witten.
Yep, we have to, we have to, so it does it's kind of a nebulous number, really.
Okay. Next one. I also looked at the town fair, and if we're cutting all these other things, I want to cut that from 8,000 to nothing. So not a drop from eight to four, but a drop from eight to nothing.
Fair Committee, you have any comment?
Eric? You go without comment. Well, there's three of us here. I think we're the only three of us. I first have to say, I appreciate, as a taxpayer, exactly what you're going through, and I -- it's not a fun position.
Oh, no.
Um, we found somebody to run bingo, so that was huge. I don't know what to say. As a taxpayer, I'd say, sure, cut it. But as a member of the Fair Committee, everybody had a great time last year. I feel confident that I could raise the $3,500 difference to 7,500 for the fireworks, but I don't feel confident that I could raise $7,500 for the fireworks.
My point is, I'm trying to get the increase to the taxpayer down to 3%.
Can we revisit this after you go through the warrant articles?
Sure. Yep.
Because I'm sure there'll be cuts in those warrant articles.
Oh, yes. Well, I'm proposing some, so we'll see, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to cut the -- Eric?
Yes, I guess as a member of the committee and as a taxpayer, I appreciate what you guys are doing also. But I would like to suggest, maybe instead of cutting it to zero, that you do put a little bit into a building fund, so that perhaps next year or the year after, if we can raise enough money, we can use that on a yearly form.
You mean some seed money? Put some seed money in there?
Some seed money, but also, if we can't raise enough money to do what we want to do, then we'll do it next year, maybe. But I think the Fair is a -- has been proven to be a great community event. We have talked with the committee about perhaps doing some other activities instead of fireworks, to keep people there and to act on a community basis, like maybe having a bonfire and some sort of a band or music or bluegrass, whatever, just for people to have something to do after the Fair. So, yeah, I would appreciate if you think about that a little bit, too, and perhaps put a little bit in.
And what Eric talked about, I did mention, the town administrator to discuss it was her, and it's my understanding that because it's a trust fund, it would have to be a deposit, which would have to be a warrant article.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can transfer money from the -- I'm looking at Mr. Tapper. We can transfer money from the operating budget into a trust fund?
No.
He's agreeing with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was...
No, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not as simple as -- which was, it's a great idea for next year to put maybe a couple thousand dollars away, but I don't think it's... And if you don't want to fund the $4,000, if you -- I agree with Eric, if you could give us some, that would help us with a different activity, because this year's Fair was shaping up, like I said, not to -- we did find somebody to run bingo that would go from after dinner to the fireworks, so that's a great addition for the community.
I was actually thinking, instead of going a full eight grand down, go to 4,000.
I concur with that.
Oyster Youth Association. Oyster Youth Association, which is two lines up.
Yeah.
Are we going to fully fund what they want? We've talked about this a little bit before.
Do you have a suggestion on what you'd take it to?
No, it's more of a conversation with the two of you.
No, I personally, I think we can reduce that.
I'm sure we should reduce it as well.
To what?
I was going around 15.
15, so have it.
Yep.
15?
Reduce by 15.
You reduce to 15?
Reduce to 15.
Okay. So reduce it to 15. All three are in three.
Yep. The next ones are in transfers to capital reserve funds. First one is fire ponds and cisterns. I'm trying to get there. It's been recommended that we put in, what, 20,000? I'd like to reduce that by 5,000. If you look at their balances going forward in terms of what they're planning, it gets to 2,024, it gets down to 88,000. So there's a little bit of a cushion there, and I think we can take advantage of a little bit of that. So I'd like to go from 20 to 15.
Let me interrupt this for a minute, so I'm sure I understand, because we are woefully, from my point of view, woefully behind in the cistern program. The cisterns have gone up to $80,000 per cistern. We funded it 20,000 a year. We get one cistern every four years. I don't know what the total requirement is in plan. Chief, maybe you can tell me, but I feel as though we need to keep up with the cistern program.
That's just my opinion. They put in 103,900, and based on the plan that they got and when they're going to implement, that's more than enough money. The lowest it gets is, in terms of the next 10 years, no, excuse me, take that back. In the next 10 years, the lowest is 2,028, gets down to 79,000. So if you drop it by five...
I just want to say that I understand what you're saying, but when we just dredge those two fire ponds, we, when we started the CIP process, we anticipated that they 'd come in a lot lower than they did, and the prices were a lot higher than we anticipated. So although I'm not speaking for the chief on the CIP committee and helped with the dredging of the fire ponds, I would think, you might want to just be leery, that when you dredge the next fire ponds or we put in the next cisterns, they're going to come in higher than the CIP has them figured for. Construction costs keep going up, higher than the inflation rate, bigger than the CIP.
So you've got four things in here listed in the CIP: Lea Hook, Center of Town, Turtle, and Packers Falls. Each of them is in there for 103,900. So which one of those is the dredging?
Can you repeat those again?
Lea Hook Road at Burley Demerit Farm, Center of Town...
That's an install, install.
Turtle Road at Bell Lane...
Install.
Packers Falls at Mass Road.
None of them are installs, aren't they? Do we have...
So where's your dredging?
Not in that plan right now.
Why not?
It's all just to add cisterns.
Excuse me?
It's all to add the cisterns. The current ones that we did, the ones that we've just on the two...
Yep.
And Riverside Farm are the only really good two fire -- or three fire ponds that we have. We're trying to switch over to all the cisterns.
But what we didn't include in this plan, which we talked about this fall, is we need to develop a maintenance plan for the three ponds that we've dredged, which is not included in that. So we need to have some money to take care of the, like, 34,000 with tamaracks, not including engineering. So just, we need to have some money for that, because we've done all this work, and we need to keep up with it. That's our fault for not having it in there, but we just kind of just dawned on us, like in November, that we didn't have it planned for.
Okay. Great. I withdraw that.
I'm sorry.
I withdraw that.
I wasn't getting those...
Okay. Well, I failed.
Sorry.
It needs to be in there, most things.
Yeah, I understand.
Next one is fire equipment. Nope, go too far. Fire equipment, it's 200,000 has been requested. I'd like to drop that by 65,000. Same thing in terms of going forward. I just think we need to stop putting so much money, and when we have these large balances sitting there, I know fire trucks go up, but you've got 575,000 for the next one, the I think this comes back to one of the things that I would like to still, I mentioned this before, we need to go through this particular, and not necessarily just the fire department. And I think you guys are doing pretty good, though. But some of these things in here, are we ever going to buy a scale for the transfer station? I don't think so.
I actually agree on that one.
So, but John, it's in the plan, and we're saving for it. Why are we saving for something and putting money aside for things that we're not going to buy? So I think...
Well, part of these things, what I understand with the CIP is that obviously we're, I hate to say it, it's almost like a wish list, things that we should have, so it's just a plan. It's not in cement, but obviously, when things go wrong, they go wrong. You know, what was that thing recently? It was a fire, was it something we had to buy? It was all rusted out? It was a fire thing, wasn't it?
It was a truck.
One of the trucks is all rusted out. It was a fire thing, man.
So just to mirror on what Selectman McCord said, when a department head comes to the CIP committee, we just put in...
It's a wish list.
It's a wish list. And then it's your job to fund it or not. It's just a...
It's the only problem that happens is the chairman gets upset when we walk around with his numbers.
Correct.
So I do understand that.
So it's just a wish list. We put in whatever the department head says, and then it's up to the board, you know, the board, this board has the final say. But it's just a wish list.
Then his board needs to go through that list, because we're sending aside money based on those particular purchases.
Correct. The CIP committee figures out what needs to be deposited. Absolutely. Yep.
To make those particular things, but if the board thinks we're not going to buy a scale, that needs to be removed, because we're saving for something we're not going to be spending money on.
We're leaving.
The other issue that comes up, you know, we're saving for a new fire truck, or tanker down the road or something like that, is a guesstimate when that needs to be replaced. We're hoping it'll be placed later than what we guessed it today, but at least we're trying to shoot for, but it is just a plan.
Well, we're saving for stuff that's in the plan that should not be in the plan, some of the things.
Well, I want to correct that a little bit. Maybe it should not be in the plan. I'm going to put some of this weight on the department manager. If in the CIP, they have placed a scale, it's up to him to plan on and take the necessary steps to install the scale. Well, I mean, the fact is, we talked about this in one of the waste committee meetings, if I remember right. The scale, in fact, can make us money. All we have now, as I think, is a couple of platform scales. We need to, we get paid by the pound or by the ton, and we need the scales to give us an accurate, an accurate number of what it is we're delivering to get paid for. So that was the reason, I believe, for saying, yeah, we need to get some electronic scales to give us accuracy on what we're billing.
But what's the ROI on that? 85,000 for a scale? That's a awful lot of poundage if you have to...
Well, we have a lot of poundage. We only have...
Well, I don't think the scale is...
I mean, I'm not saying there's not cheaper scales that we could get. I don't know. And Toby's not here, so I can't answer the question, or he can't answer the question. Yes, Eric?
I have a question, but I don't understand why you need a scale to weigh going out, because you have to get a certified scale from the buyer with a receipt to say what you have paid for, and that's a certified scale. They don't just say, oh, you brought in a ton of paper, we're going to give you X amount of dollars. You have to have that weigh slip right there. So I don't understand why we need to weigh it.
Well, I don't know. We would need Toby here. I can't answer all of it. I'm not...
And if we're not getting receipts from a certified scale, then we need to be asking for them, because that's the law.
Trey?
Back to the fire department. I'd like to say, our CIP plan, when I became chief, was way lower than it needed to be, or than it should have been. And when we came up and bought the tanker and asked the town for that money, the Selectman cut the CIP that year as well, and we used $40,000 of that to put towards the new tanker, added the 70,000, I think, that the board approved under the last CIP. So in my opinion, we're already behind the eight ball in the fire department, and we're just trying to burn it up. And we do have a couple of years that the numbers get pretty high, but everything in our plan is a replacement plan. It's not a wish list for us. There's certain stuff that we look at for the new equipment line. That's the wish list that we use to purchase things. But this stuff is, you know, 20-year purchases, 10-year purchases, and we're trying to replace everything that we have. And a couple of weeks ago, I asked the board $50,000 for our radio infrastructure, so we can work on a tower system, because our radios don't work in this town. So that's why that went up to $200,000. And that's all I got to say. Well done. Thank you. So what you're recommending, cut again?
Reduce it by 65.
I can't hear you.
Reduce it by 65.
Reduce it by 65?
Yep. Bring it down to 135,000. And I think, one of the things, and I'm not, and like Karen said, I'm not having fun doing this. This is not very nice. I'm trying to get it, and I'm trying to be cognizant of the fact that the tax rate potentially can go up to, by 3%, and I'm trying to get it so that it doesn't go up much higher than that. And I'm just trying to be sensitive to people in terms of what the town has to spend for things.
I understand. I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that Lee is growing, and Lee, as far as, especially on the first responder side, is getting busier and busier. Anybody that doesn't agree with that just needs to look at the last four weeks. I think one of the fires ended up with, how much, chief? 61 firefighters on scene, if I remember right?
78.
Huh?
78.
78 firefighters on scene that we manage. So, you know, that's another concern. And the fact is, we're not always going to be able to keep the tax rate at 3%. This is New Hampshire. There's no sales tax. There's no state income tax. Taxes are going to go up pretty much every year. All we had to do is listen to Dr. Morse one time, and there's $1.91 right there. So to take it, to turn around and respond to that by taking resources away from the first responders or from other services, I think, is, requires a whole lot of thought.
And I hope people understand why we're going through this, even though, what was the operational budget changed before we modified it again?
The operational budget?
Yep.
So 1.82?
1.82%. And Scott keeps saying 3%. Last year, we took money out of the fund balance, that was left on the side fund balance, and we floated a lot of these transfers out of the fund balance. It's not happening this year. So that's why, that's how Scott comes up with these monies, why it's such an issue. So even though it looks like 1.82%, it's not going to be 1.82% next year.
It's just, right now, I haven't put in any of these changes. The operating budget part of the budget is up 1.55%. In terms of the total budget, it's being reduced by 6.15%. The problem is, we used 442,000 on the side fund balance last year. So really, the problem is, the net town appropriation is going to be increasing by 14.21%. Okay? So that's where I am, and I'm just trying to be sensitive to increases. And if you were here last time we met, Dr. Morse told us the school board is only going up to 3.49%. After my heart stopped and started again, you know, I don't want us to be in the same boat, and I'm not insensitive to safety issues, but we just can't give everything to everybody and still keep the tax rate increase reasonable. And that's where I am. And I don't want to be here doing this. I'd rather say, have everything you want, but we can't afford everything we want, so...
So am I, and I'd like to, instead of going that way... So am I, and I'd like, instead of going that much deep, I'd like to keep it at 175,000.
Okay, 175, pass. Where are we now, Scott? I only have three more. Then it's Dawn's turn.
You're cutting into my territory, really, but that's all I have.
Oh, sorry. Um, the reevaluation fund, I'd like to drop that by five to 15. Sorry, are we fine with that?
Oh, the revaluation, got it, okay.
Revaluation, revaluation.
You wanna drop it by how much?
Okay.
I'm gonna drop the transfer station equipment fund down from 38,000 down to 25.
You beat me to it, but I'd like to drop it to zero. I'd like to drop it with zero, based on what they've got to buy and what they've got in that particular fund.
You wanna take the entire 38 down?
Yep. Remove it to their section. Transfer station. Their funds drops to 46,000 in 2026. So they've got 108,000 in it now. They're buying two storage containers for about $7,200 apiece this, in 2020. In 2021, that's where you get the 83,000 scale. And you've got two wastewater heater replacements and a roll-off container for a total of about 17,000. So in the next two, three years, they don't need it, even going out 10 years.
So you wanna zero it?
Uh, well, John wants to do it at 25, and I want to zero it.
It's all up to you, Mr. Brown.
I don't, I don't like to zero it. Let's take it to 20. I think we gotta have something there.
Um, my last one, roads and bridges, I'd like to go from 60,000 to 50. And that's my last one.
Roads and bridges?
Yep. Right now, they have...
Where is it?
Roads and bridges, 400 something?
Yeah, they have... 467.
467.
471.
471 now with interest. So they have almost half a million dollars.
Yeah.
So what do you wanna take it down to? I'd like to take it from 60 to 50. Done.
Okay. 50 to 50. Okay, 50,000 on that. Okay, done. Mr. LaCourse, Selectman LaCourse?
Actually, Scott jumped on bolster mine in that 71, one of eight town hall. Instead of 100,000, I'd like to cut it to 50,000. Oh, no, we already cut it to 35.
No, the new one, I think we need.
Oh, the new one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As I'm looking at these other issues that we're having to cut here and there, yes, I wanna renovate our old town hall. I know it's part of what we're involved with, but it is a lot of money, 100,000. Take it down to 50,000.
Okay, I agree.
That's it.
Tom, turn. Any other conversations? Any comments?
I think the rebound got cut by, by, did you know?
Yes. Yes, ma'am?
Can I?
Please.
Good evening. I was here a few months ago. Jen Siz, Executive Director at Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I fully understand and appreciate the challenges that you go through in balancing your budget and trying to keep it fiscally constrained and make as minimal of an impact as possible on your taxpayers. And I know that it was proposed to eliminate dues for Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I just wanted to be here to answer any questions that you might have had in regards to that and the benefit that you receive from membership. I've also done up just a letter that I did email before coming here this evening that I'll just pass out here now, just summarizing some of the things that we've done over the last year or so and the value of those services and how your dues dollars have been expended over the last year. I'll just pass this down. Yeah, they might, I emailed it before driving here, so I don't know if you actually had a chance to receive that.
Is that what's the attachment to this letter?
Um, yes, actually. Oh, yeah, you got it already printed. Oh, great. Thanks. Yeah. Jen, you have a copy for me?
Yeah, sure. I have a few extras.
Thanks.
There you go. Yep. So just, it's a quick summary in a nutshell of how our dues are expended. Half of our dues, right off the bat, go towards matching our federal transportation dollars. That is something that is mandated, that, that we provide, and that you, as a municipality, are part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's a federal designation. We are tasked with somehow coming up with that match. The state of New Hampshire does not match those dollars. So we are in the position of the only resources that we have to, to contribute to that is dues dollars. And that does consume 49% of all dues that come into SRPC automatically go to matching those federal transportation dollars. What happens is when a community does not contribute dues, that's, that burden is then shifted on the other communities in the region. We are still mandated by federal law to provide you with those services in the, in the transportation planning process. So essentially, your neighbors are paying for you to be represented in that planning process and are paying for you to include your process, your projects in the state tenure plan and the Transportation Improvement Program, which is what ultimately allocates those federal dollars. So that's just one thing to keep in, in mind and consideration. There's also some other benefits. An example of, so when a community ceases to pay dues, you lose voting representation at the table for anything not transportation related. That, for an example of that, is we recently had a development of regional impact that was declared by the town of Barrington, very close to the Lee Town Line. Your commissioner sits on the Regional Impact Committee. Your commissioner had the opportunity to review this application and vote on the comments that we are sending back to Barrington. That is something that as a non-due paying community, you would lose that representation at the table. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. Also, for example, the hazard mitigation plan that was recently completed in, I would have to say, record time, with probably the fastest approval process ever of a hazard mitigation plan, that we were able to prioritize because you're a long-standing dues-paying member of the commission. And so something where our, our staff have relationships with the staff of the state, that they were able to leverage on your behalf. Our staff also had to reprioritize existing workloads to expedite your plan. And we did this because we understood that you have a grant application that's going in that required an approved hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for those grant funds, and your prior hazard mitigation plan had expired. So that is something that, because you are a dues-paying community, we put other projects to the side to prioritize you, to make sure that you didn't lose eligibility for, for those potential grant funds, understanding that implication. So again, I'm not gonna go through line by line some of the projects that are outlined in the letter that I sent to you, I have here this evening, which are outlined what we've already done for the town at no cost. By and large, when you reach out, pick up the phone to us and ask for some technical assistance, some map requests, we do that at no cost to the town. It's covered under your, under your dues and your technical assistance, kind of going back. Things that we have done is, on a contract basis, have been tax maps or larger projects. So just kind of keeping that in mind. So, that's all I had. Just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to ask any questions, if you had any.
Okay. Thank you very much. Karen, I think you have some comment?
I just wanna remind the board that at the last meeting, that's why I asked for the increase and other consultants, so we can still hire them to do services for the town on an as they, as needed basis, as opposed to just a flat dues payment. Thank you.
I ask a question, and I think it's to both ladies. I'm kinda hearing two different things, and maybe I'm wrong. But what I'm hearing is, don't run away, Karen.
Nope.
One of the things I'm hearing is, things that you used to be at, we now pay for. So, and I think it's, I don't wanna put words in Karen's mouth here, but it seems like we're not getting too much bag for our buck, and we're getting charged for other things that we usually got for free before.
So my point when I did my budget presentation was, in looking back at the last four to five annual reports from Stratford Regional Planning Commission, other agencies were benefiting from our dues, not the town's. So in my thinking, we could try it for a year to see if we pay for, as, if, let's go, if you wanna go through this lovely handout she provided, which was fantastic, number one, they're getting a grant for, which is fantastic. Number two, conducting 12 traffic counts to support local and state planning efforts, we didn't ask for those. Facilitated the hazard mitigation update, that was a grant they got paid for in addition to our dues.
Didn't we pay $6,000?
Correct.
Yeah.
We paid.
We paid the Stratford Regional Planning Commission $6,000.
And then we'll get, we'll get some grant, we'll get grant money back. But we're, so they're being paid for that service.
Yep.
Provide GIS services to create a series of map evaluated potential commercial zone. Happy to, in the future, we would pay for that for, for the value of $544. Actually, probably a little more, because if you're not a dues member, the hourly rate is greater.
Yep.
Which we would, which is why I wanted to keep my outside consulting line to pay for that. Topographical maps for the, that was for the fire department. The fire department would happily pay for that. Lee mapping data for inclusion, online mapping, MapGeo, I believe we pay for MapGeo every year.
Yep.
Converted snowmobile trails, they, we, the town would pay for that. And review crash data with the town and recommend potential highway safety improvements. I don't, I asked Randy, and I don't believe Randy asked for that. That was also a state thing. So my point was, if we pay for what we need and let other agencies pay for what they need, just try it for a year. That was all my, nothing, Stratford Regional Planning is, is fantastic, but everybody knows, everything keeps going up, 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 and up. And if you add those things up that we wanted, it's probably about $1,500. That's all my point was. I'll just give you a couple, couple of quick clarifications. You're, you're correct. Your hazard mitigation plan is gone through a grant from the state. We did help on the back end to make sure that contract was executed and that you got those grant dollars and that grant executed. I know that there was a little bit of confusion in getting that set up initially, and we facilitated that. And again, used our contacts at the state to help out with that. Also, again, helped out on that expedited review, which was above and beyond what the grant funded portion of that effort is. The hazard mitigation plan was a little bit different, the way it was set up for the town this year. A lot of times, hazard mitigation grants are done under pre-disaster mitigation grant funds, which should the town elect to have their regional planning commission do it, the state just directly funds us to do the work on your behalf. So it's a service that you receive at no charge in, in that regard. You know, the, the floodplain mapping, we are not benefiting from that. We're just facilitating the grant. We got the grant. You're the one who's getting the science, the research, and the mapping. So while we're facilitating the work, we did the grant writing, you're getting the professional services from the engineers, not us. So another thing to kind of keep in mind there, with others. The MapGeo, yes, you do pay for the licensing costs, but we put in and we contribute all of the staff time associated with maintaining that system so that you have all of that on hand. So if you call us and say, hey, we'd like to change how this is displayed, or we have new information that we'd like incorporated, we, we automatically do the staff time as part of your dues. It's just the licensing fee that the municipalities pay. So, and that's something that's kind of above and beyond our, our operating expenses. Yeah. And then I think the other, like I said, the big one is the transportation programs. And yes, the traffic counts, those are some things that, that come down on high to us from the, from the state, from the Department of Transportation, which they're feeding up into the federal systems as well. So we have to do it, and you always have the opportunity to pick up the phone and say, we have an intersection we'd like to know a little bit more about, or we have a road that we'd like to know a little bit more about. Could you please set up some counts here? And we do, at no cost, special counts for municipalities. And we do monitor, uh, safety, safety data in different intersections across the region, trying to identify locations where there are the highest incidences of accidents with fatalities and serious, serious injury. I think we all wanna have our roads be safer, and it's something that is covered free of charge from the state. And so, on your behalf and on behalf of all of the communities in the region, that's something that we track and monitor for you. Whether you take advantage of that or not, that's your prerogative. So I don't wanna take up too much more of your time. I just wanted to make sure you had complete information. And I really do understand and appreciate the position that you're in with balancing your budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, huh? Sorry, Steve, I didn't see you there. Just...
I wanted to say something about the traffic counts. I used to work for the Department of Transportation, and 90% of those traffic counts are done on state roads and state intersections. Their police department has their own traffic counter, so that would be a moot point. Because we don't, I mean, the town, I, as the road agent, really don't know why, I would need to know what the traffic counts are at the intersection of 152 and 025.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Thank you. Just wanted to go on record that the Conservation Commission definitely uses the services of Stratford Regional Planning Commission and have benefited from the, that usage. Was disappointed to see that the proposed line item of 5300 had been reduced to zero. I understand the motivation, but I don't know, although Karen has talked about having room in her budget to take care of paying on a, a project by project basis, I don't know if she's got room in her budget for the Conservation Commission to do those project by project costs. And, well, I guess I'll just stop there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Okay, then I think we'll move on to the warrant article.
Okay, just, just wanted, while we're still on the budget, just wanna make sure there's not any further discussion on the budget. Is this gonna be filed? Are we gonna send this off to DRA tomorrow? So there's no thoughts either adding money back in or cut, that was kind of the previous meeting, or cutting any further?
Still on your suggestion to add that line to the progress budgets? I was hinting in that area.
Oh, in the personnel budget? I, I know, I keep making the pitch for it. I just, it makes me very nervous not to have a cushion in that health insurance budget. It is...
And what would be the cushion?
Well, typically, we've just budgeted for a family plan, and then we've put $22,000 back, which I understand is a big number, given what we've talked about tonight. Other than that. But not even just the personnel budget, whether there was any interest in pulling back any of the money that had been cut into the previous discussion.
So, you comment? Thoughts? The road budget, I think? No?
That's just funding that we won't be able to get from the contingency fund if we need it, so...
You'd have to use a contingency, though.
We wouldn't be able to use a contingency for health insurance.
I couldn't support for any minutes back here. Times change. Come on in, me again. How much do you want to put in there?
What we've done in years past is include, we'll call it a buffer, equal to a family plan. And right now, that's about $22,000, because the way we budget the health insurance is based on the people that we have working for us now and the plan that they have, meaning
Okay, let me ask...
Single and two-person or a family.
Let me ask one question. Have we ever had to use it?
Have we ever had to use it?
Yes.
People have changed their health insurance... People have changed their health insurance plans within a fiscal year, yes.
And we've had to use that?
Well, the money's been there, so, yes.
Okay, so yes, we should go ahead and put it in.
I'm just, I don't know where else we would, I mean, I understand Mr. Buggy's point, yes, you're right, we give back, on average, $200,000 every year across the whole operating budget.
But you're holding yourself to that particular department, we can get the money from some other place?
Yeah, the board absolutely can.
So, I'm not so hung up about the $24,000, you can find it some other place, because I think there's enough leeway in other particular lineups, so, we don't have to hold ourselves that Finance Administration has to stay within a budget, we can pull it from someplace else, so...
Well, I know, but we say that, but where? I mean, we've just gone through and raped the budget twice, so, how much more extra $24,000s do we have in there?
Well, usually, we take out, like, last year was 200 and something thousand we put back into the other side of our balance, so...
Right, it's been about $200,000, which is, what, 5% of the entire operating budget?
My fear is that people will say, geez, you're looking for an increase that's this high, they'll vote against it, and you've got the default budget. Do you want the default budget?
Well, I don't...
Particularly, but, you know, I'm just trying to be sensitive to increases. If we keep holding that, yeah, we use a little bit of it, that's fine, but $24,000, $22,000? I think it was $24, but whatever else. I'm just trying to be sensitive to that.
Well, okay, I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that we're at zero, and something happens, and now we're looking to where are we going to get the money from?
Yep.
I don't know that that's going to be any easier. Put that letter, huh? We'll put it back in. But if we did 12, it doesn't cover it, does it cover it?
Well, it depends, it depends on who moves, right, it depends on who moves to what.
And when it moves.
And when it moves, exactly. We can leave it the way it is, and as you say, if we're going to end up, or if any of us are going to end up needing more money, we're going to have to come back to the board with the understanding across all departments, that it may come, if the personnel budget ends up needing more money, it may come from everybody's budget, as long as everybody understands that. That's all.
Let's take it out. Bite the bullet, we'll bite the bullet somewhere. Do it now, do it later, take it out. No more changes from me. No more?
Thank you.
No more warrants? So we are, yeah, we're up for the warrant, I guess.
Just a reminder, the planning board has a public hearing Thursday night, and there may be some very minor changes to Article 2. So I will not be able to finalize the warrant, until Friday morning.
That's excellent.
No, it is excellent.
Because that dovetails into my thing on number three, so, that's excellent.
Thanks, Karen.
Do you want me to explain that, or are you going to...
No, I think we're...
No need to explain it, do you expect any changes?
There's one spelling error. The only thing that can happen at this time is minor spelling adjustments, that's it. So it's either something will be rescinded, or a spelling change, and there's one spelling error that my secretary noticed, Eric.
Secretary Eric?
Actually, I think I already made that change in the...
Oh, she already made that, so, there isn't any, other than possibly pulling number one would be the only. And I don't foresee A, I don't foresee that being pulled, but that would be the only thing that would be pulled if something's pulled.
But everything else would have made the same?
And number one, I think, is going to go, because that was pretty much what the consensus of everybody agreed on, even the abutters, so...
Number one?
A.
A.
Sorry.
Not one, two A.
Expanded commercial zone.
Expanded commercial zone.
Was it, the abutters said what?
The abutters that were there, majority of them were in support of that.
Okay, expanded commercial zone, yes.
They're not...
Were.
Majority.
Majority of them were. They said they could live with that, was what they're worrying. Except for one.
So that should allay some of your fears.
I still have to wait, I can't, I still have to wait.
Well, that was...
Because, are we, Mr. Buggy, may I ask, are we anticipating extended conversation around Article 3?
Extended.
If so, I'm just suggesting, maybe we start reviewing Article 4, and go back...
If you do what I suggest, there will be no conversation at all.
Does it involve another night meeting?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Oh, for us, probably.
For the board?
No, no, oh, well, we have to meet on Friday, and is it going to be anyway?
The board can come in and just sign the warrant, if the board agree, if the board agrees to the warrant tonight, with the understanding that the planning board, which you can't change the planning board article anyway.
Oh, darn, okay. Maybe, why don't you go and skip three and come back here?
We're going to go to it.
So Article 4, we have now changed to $50,000?
Right. Fifty thousand. Five, five, thirty-five.
No, this is the new, this is the new...
Oh, sorry, well, the old, the old, oh. Don't mess me up.
Article 5 is the operating budget, so obviously, the numbers that I'm going to keep what that is when I calculate the budget. Jesus, for Tappin would like to be recognized.
John Tappin, and I'm speaking both as a citizen and also as a trustee of trust funds. In Article 4, the name of that fund is on.
Oh, thank you for reminding me, thank you for reminding me. I changed Article 4, because that's what DRA said I had to do, and it's...
They said it had to say renovating Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund?
Yes, yes, yes.
This is no fault, right?
I understand what you may think of DRA's recommendations.
Yes. So they said no to Town Hall renovation capital reserve fund?
Yeah, this is exactly as DRA changed the one that I submitted.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me that they did that.
Where would we involve?
Article 5, just the number's going to be what I'm calculating the operating budget. Article 6 is now at $149,000, based on the revised number that the fire chief received for the SCBA units.
All right, chief, you still moving forward with this? Now that we've played around with your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
We met with a couple of different manufacturers, got quotes back, tried to keep apples to apples. The other manufacturer that we currently use was, was $25,000, $30,000 more than what we chose.
This is the breathing apparatus?
Yep. And the one that we actually chose, and the number's light better, was the cheaper one, so we'd like to move forward with that.
Okay.
Article 7, I believe that we can change that number to $11,000, based on a price quote that the fire chief received today.
Good.
For the internal imager camera.
Can I ask the chief a question about that?
Yep.
So now, this will give us three that are the same?
Two.
Two that are the same. So you've got three in total?
Yes.
So you've still got one that's not so good?
Correct.
So, when is that going to be replaced? In 2020?
The plan, when I talked above, was going to be next year.
That's right, they mentioned.
Okay. And it says, and then you're going to replace all three in 2030?
Yep.
So you've got one replaced this year?
What's that?
You've got one replaced this year?
No, we got one replaced, we came, I came to the board three years ago and announced to spend out of the new equipment line.
All right.
So we have that one already, this is the second one, and the third one hopefully will be next year.
And they're all the same?
And then they'll all be the same.
All right, thank you.
Article 8, the board just changed the amount to be deposited into the fire equipment capital reserve fund to, I believe, $175,000.
Correct.
Article 9 is still depositing $35,000 into the town buildings capital reserve fund. Article 10 is, I believe, now, changing the deposit into the highway, road, and bridge capital reserve fund to $50,000. Article 11 is depositing $55,000 into the highway equipment fund. Article 12, the board just voted to reduce the deposit to the transfer station capital reserve fund to $20,000. Article 13, I believe we kept the $20,000 going into fire policy systems. Article 14, I believe we just changed the deposit to the revow fund to $15,000. Article 15 is still depositing $15,000 into, and the DRA corrected it to the internal service expendable trust fund, that must be how they have it in their records.
Mr. Tappin?
He likes to argue with DRA, I just go with what they're telling me here.
Well, the thing is, when John argues with them, most of the time, he's right, so...
I just...
What's next, Paul?
Article 16 is suspending the, or postponing the deadline to demolish or remove the parish house, until July 1, 2020. Article 17 is the contingency fund at $20,000.
Can I ask a question on Article 16? Why is there a question mark there?
Question mark where?
In 16.
Shall the town suspend efforts to remove the walls?
There'll be no question marks in the other one, so, you need to be consistent, there's two of them. The other ones are periods.
Yeah, they're not, those, I, it's, when we've always done it...
Well, what?
I mean, I suppose if we said, to see if the town shall suspend efforts, that's not the language I was given by the Heritage Commission, but...
All right.
Article 17, contingency fund, and Article 18 was submitted via petition. So assuming that the board doesn't have any further changes to the warrant, Article 17, number three?
Yeah, back to three.
And what does the captain want to say?
John? Yes, in Article 15, the name of the fund, this internal service fund for accrued benefits was created in 1992, and the warrant article stated to create an expendable general trust, general fund trust fund, under the provisions of RSA 31, colon, 19, dash, to be known as the internal service fund for accrued benefits. And so the trustees of trust funds have continued to use the name that was written into the warrant article in 1992. Now, it is true that DRA has a tremendous hangup about labeling town trust funds expendable trust funds, and they should be talking to the state legislature to change statutes if they'd like to get that in there. But you are now referring to a fund by a name that's not the name that was given when the fund was created, so, but we can leave it, I mean, we know what fund it is.
We know what fund it is.
I can argue with DRA on...
I think you should argue with him. You have a good position.
You can put an AKA after.
As you said, we know, but maybe when we're not here in the future, we don't know, we know someone's going to internalize it differently.
All right, we're back with Article 3.
Ask a question on all of Articles, except three?
Yes.
Does the board support all of them? Because we put that language in there, but we haven't had a conversation about that.
Correct.
So is the board favorable for all those articles, Article 4 through, not 18?
18.
And can you comment on 18?
No, I'm not favorable with 18, but...
Yeah, it's not, it's not a money warrant article.
No, it's not.
So...
So the board does not need to...
Make your statement.
And actually, some, some within municipal government and at the state level say that the selectmen can't comment on an article that's not...
So 4 through 17 is the board agreement that you're in support of those?
Yes.
Yes.
Now we're back to Article number three.
So, just a couple of things. The board authorized us to get two cost estimates?
Yes.
We met one, one of the gentlemen yesterday, he gave us some updates this morning, we met with one of the other, the other gentleman, just before our meeting at 3 o'clock, he is not completely done. First gentleman, we need to check his numbers, and we sat here during our meeting, trying to give you something. I have some to give you, but I would like us, if it's possible, to have time to go over those particular numbers and make sure, you know, everything's correct. So, we meet again on Thursday, it would be nice if we could meet on Friday and just finalize everything. I know that gives the town administrator conniptions, but I just want to make sure that this is something that is correct, and we've not forgotten something, so...
So when do we find out?
I can tell you what numbers I'd like to suggest, but I'd like to make, give us some time to make sure that those are okay and appropriate.
So we would find out the whole number?
I'll tell you the whole number right now. I'll tell you the whole number right now. I'd like to go back and check to make sure, because we don't have that second estimate yet, he's going to get it to us tomorrow.
Okay.
Give us some partials today, but it's not complete.
Well, you don't want to announce the number today if he's going to give you this tomorrow. I guarantee you, you'll be a little bitter. If he's got any sense at all.
It's not a bit.
They're not a bit.
It's not a bit.
It's not a bit.
It's not, it's not a bit, okay, I understand, but still, it's a...
Not totally, that definitely.
Okay.
Oh, is it okay, or?
We just, again, the timing and the posting.
Oh, it's Friday, you got tomorrow, right? You need 24 hours, right?
Oh, we weren't even talking about that.
Oh, what are we talking about?
There's the timing of, you know, getting the numbers to DRA, getting the changes to DRA, and then hearing back from DRA, and then being able to get this all done and posted by the 20, that's all.
Well, you think, in terms of Article 3, you've got the language, so we're just going to be tweaking the numbers?
Yes, yeah. So is the board thinking you're going to meet Friday morning?
Well, I'm available.
At 39 o'clock would be good, or are you going to be prepared to do it Thursday?
We're meeting at 1 o'clock till 3?
On Thursday?
Yeah.
Can the board meet Thursday after that?
Okay, I have another meeting, but, okay.
What time is it?
About 3:30 in that area. We could do it at 5, 6, 7?
There's a few to turn. What time are you available?
The planning board meeting.
What time?
The planning board at 7:00. And we need him for a forum.
Good thing, have it been done, I think. I'd rather do Friday, Friday morning, 8 o'clock.
I can do Friday morning, 8 o'clock.
Friday morning, 8 o'clock, okay.
When is it, 9:00 or 10:00?
Where are I?
Town hall.
Town hall.
Okay. Better jingle you than these.
So we're not discussing Article 3 any further this evening?
Oh, well, I might not give you the numbers, but, I don't know, anybody who might want to take something?
I think you should.
Well, I'm quite surprised. I think that it would be very appropriate for us to have some additional time to make sure that we have the numbers correct.
You want to make sure it's right.
Because we were working right up till, what, 20 minutes of 6:00, trying to make things add up. But, we do have some significant changes, so, isn't there a way that they could hear about...
They can talk about, okay, you can talk about changes.
General changes, and the general numbers, because I think if we find a mistake in our arithmetic, it's not going to be $200,000.
Can I interrupt for a second? I'm sorry. Before you go on to this, could you, is it possible that you can vote on the changes you've already made, for those of us who can't attend Friday morning's budget? If you don't, because, department heads, if you don't vote on the final budget, we always come to all the budget meetings in case there's a question, so if you could vote on everything up until Article 3?
Oh, really?
Yeah, vote on all, everything else, so we don't have to come Friday morning?
They're in agreement to everything.
Yeah, we're in agreement, everything up to this week, but we said...
Don't you typically make a motion, so it's final?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Then, then we, as department heads, we won't have to come till the eight o'clock.
Except for three.
Except for three. That would be great. Then us department heads don't have to come to Friday morning's meeting. Sorry, John, just before we move on to something else. Thank you.
Want to get home?
No, I don't, I just.
It's all about.
They're afraid to leave. We might say something.
Without this being closed, until it's closed, things can happen. Thank you.
So actually, sure, let's review the changes we made to the operating budget tonight, and we can get a vote from the board. So I don't see a change that the, uh, majority of the board agreed to until April eighth, which is to change the general assistance, rent assistance line to fifteen thousand dollars. Yes. And then to cut the Oyster River Youth Association to fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct, yes.
And then to cut the town fair to four thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then, we already went over it, I'll just do it one more time. The transfer to fire equipment capital reserve is now a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The reval is fifteen thousand. Highway, roads, and bridges is fifty thousand. Transfer station equipment is twenty thousand, and the new renovate Town Hall is fifty thousand. So, um, your motion is to.
Move to review the changes that we just listed in the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, more on Article Three.
So, um, not saying any numbers, um, a couple of things that have happened. Um, the foundation trustees have come forward.
Okay, I'm sorry, can we just call it the LPL?
The who?
L P L, L P L Public Library Community Center Foundation. It has nothing to do with the trustees. We're a separate 501(c)(3). So it's the foundation.
The foundation.
And it really matters.
You said the foundation trustees, I think.
Oh, the foundation.
I mean, some of us wear two hats, but it is the foundation.
That particular group.
The foundation.
The foundation.
Foundation.
It's not forward and offered to fundraise for the renovation of the existing library, the cost of renovation, not the cost of the eighteen percent or the ten percent contingency. Um, that number that they floated is three hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I think with some of the information we got from the two cost estimators, that number's less than that, but I'm not going to tell you how much till Friday.
I would, can I interrupt? Because we did talk, I mean, I was here this afternoon, and, I mean, I had to leave to go do some things, but we did talk about a number?
Yep.
That number changed?
No, but they said, don't say any numbers, because you don't want to release numbers.
Okay, so I should be here at Fri- Friday morning at eight o'clock to find out what that number, I mean, because it matters.
The new Town Hall? So they've offered.
We're going to renovate somewhere down the road.
They've offered to fundraise for that particular pa- part of the particular plan. So we are suggesting that that be removed from Article Number Three in terms of the cost of that. So basically, we're making it kind of like renovating the current Town Hall. It's something that's going to be done, but not part of this particular project, per se.
Okay, so we would be removing the words in the second sentence, renovating and?
Yes, so it would just be adding two. So they would fundraise for that. Um, we talked with them about different scenarios. If they raise the whole amount, wherever it is, that's fine. But what if they raise half of it? What, what do we do? And I think it needs to be said that, um, it, I think it's their intention that they would come back to the town and say, okay, we've raised this much, we need this much more, with the town support, whatever that particular number is. Uh, it's my understanding, right at the moment, they have about eighty-two thousand. So let's say it's three-seventy or maybe a little bit less. They would have to raise between now and whenever that is, that particular difference. Um, I personally thought that was a very good gesture on their part, and I applaud them for it. Um, so that's one thing that's happened. The other thing is, I think, based on the numbers that we got, we can get the bond amount down. So that hopefully will make some people more receptive to the particular plan. Um, the other thing that we found out, which really just passed on to us, which you recognize, the twenty-year bond that just sold from the National Bank is three point zero five percent, and we're carrying four percent to the interest rate. So that looks okay, because people are going to say, you know, it's four percent real estate. Um, the other thing that we've done is, um, uh, engineer equipment. Um, in terms of, we've looked at, uh, different building products. Uh, we've got quotes for doing wood. We've got quotes for doing ICF, which is a concrete product. Um, it has some good energy efficiency, um, capabilities. It's not green. But I think there's some energy efficiencies that we can from that particular thing, so. What have I forgotten? We just, just to let. Just to let the board know, we were hit yesterday and today with an awful lot of information. So I got out of the meeting today at five forty, five forty-five or whatever, and I go and drive it home. It's like, I think we need to sit on this a little bit and make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. I would rather not give you numbers right now than we haven't checked and had a time to reflect upon. And I think that would be prudent for us.
Um, I, I, I'm, I agree with you fully, Scott. I'm trying to understand the number in the warrant is the number in the warrant. I mean, if that number moves around too much, I, I think it's not in anybody's best interest. So the number in the warrant has to be a solid number.
Mm-hmm.
Or it can go down.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, but.
Okay, we're trying to get your number. Well, like I said, we've got, um, we got a number from one person. He gave us an update today. I think there's a couple of things he's kind of, he's tweaked a little bit. But the second, last, uh, person, we met with him right before the meeting today, and he's not completely done. He's supposed to be done by tomorrow.
Yeah.
So that will give us two data points. Uh, and then LBA, as far as we can tell, is above both of those data points at the moment.
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to pick one of those. Is that right?
Well, we're going to look at.
And adjust the number accordingly?
Yep.
Okay, I see.
So are you remembering the printer? Sending the document to the printer?
There is that, the long form copy that we have? Someplace here.
It's all right, just tell me.
Um, the, um, we have a handout, and we, today was like the deadline for getting it printed, so we have it for the delivery session. One of those, that particular handout has, um, information about these numbers that we're not talking about. So if we delay until Friday, then we won't have that particular piece of information. So we can't get it to them in time to get to. The only thing I'm thinking in terms of.
Print it in.
Are you thinking the same thing I'm thinking? We printed ourselves.
I volunteer to go to Staples and pay for it with my own money. How many copies do we need?
Hundred fifty.
Okay, I'll do that.
So I'm assuming that the number that's in the warrant article right now is going to be lower?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, we, we have to reveal numbers in public budget hearings. So if the number's going to be higher, we do need to talk about it.
It's, I can pretty much assure you it's going to be lower. So can we do that on Friday, lower? Sure. Okay. So it's definitely going to be less than the four million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. So, the other thing that we have, which you're going to need in this as well, John Tappin has in his program, so if the bonds, whatever it is, he can tell us exactly what that particular first interest payment is, because we have to reference that as well.
Well, has there been any discussion with the DCVC as to the timing? I know Mr. Tappin and I, I think, touched briefly on this in the conversation. Or maybe, no, maybe it was, uh, Mr. Dean. Um, the, the line in here about the first year's interest only needs to be there if we're going to, let's say, get the money, get all the money with the June sale, and then the first interest payment, I think, is due the following April. So we would want, I think, to be assured that the project's going to be moving along fast enough so that we're not getting the money for no purpose.
Well, the other thing that we need to do is take a look at in terms of, because you've given us information about bands, which are on anticipation notes. Um, and it seems like it's cost effective, at least we haven't done all the analysis, but it seems like it's cost effective for us to get different iterations of it and not take the whole thing at once.
Okay.
Because, um, the cost for, um, the bond bank is fifty-five hundred dollars up to eight thousand, plus two thousand for each dispersment. That's what you said.
You mean the bond council?
Bond council.
Right.
But that's the cost for getting the bond. So if we were to have three dispersments per se, that's like two thousand each. But if you're not taking out a million dollars at four percent, that kind of pays for itself right there. So I think that's more analysis that we need to do. The thought process right now is, if this passes in March, we start the process for finding an architect to do the plans, go out to bid, and start sometime probably, you know, fall-ish, something like that, maybe? Maybe into the spring, something like that, uh, into the, into the summer, excuse me, I misspoke. So.
Okay. It, it just sounds like if, if that's what we're going to end up doing, then we don't, and I understand that the bond number change is this number going to change. But that ninety thousand, three hundred dollar figure, we may not be expending that, if just go twenty.
Twenty. This is possible.
Okay.
I think ninety, or whatever the number is, is the worst case. If we got it in June and we took the whole thing?
Right.
That's unlikely. But if we said we took a third of it, you know, there's going to be a cost for interest, but it's going to be way less than the ninety.
Right.
I think we have to tell them what the worst case would be in terms of how high it may be. Okay, good, good, good. Do you see anything?
Miscellaneous, shall we?
Closing the public hearing.
We'll close the public, we'll close the budget public hearing, move on to Number Four. Miscellaneous?
Uh, I have for the board signature, we deed for the sale of this place. The property took my tax deed.
Yes. Anything else? Anything else under this lines?
Um, no.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the select board public meeting minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Except that we don't have the minutes here, so we have to slow things over for the board to do that Friday morning.
Rolling right along.
Rolling right along.
Like the chat. Miscellaneous unfinished business, I think. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There it is.